Call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Roll call, please.
Zisada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins? Powell? Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Six present.
Alderman Perkins did let me know that he was down with the flu, so he was sorry he couldn't make it tonight. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Hyvee, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks for coming by, Shadow. Really appreciate you. Moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
All right. The agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. We have none. Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have none. Agenda Item F, Appointments. Number one, appointing Dorie De La Cruz and reappointing Justin Carlson and Maurice McDavid to the Citizens Police Review Board, all for a two-year term through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. And number two, appointing DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation Executive Director Melissa Amadeo to the Airport Advisory Board for a four-year term through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, as per Chapter forty-five, Airport Advisory Board of the City of DeKalb Municipal Code. Can I have a motion to approve these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, Alderman.
So Scott is going to be up here with Carson.
With Justin Carlson?
Justin, I'm sorry. Justin, and that's who's going back, right, to this board?
Yeah, so his term expired, so I'm reappointing it until he gets elected, because he's running unopposed. So once he gets elected, then we'll appoint someone to replace him.
Got you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
These appointments have been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of three million, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Number three, investment and bank balance summary through December, two thousand and twenty-four. Number four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through December, two thousand and twenty-four. Number five, Crime Free Housing Bureau Report, January, two thousand and twenty-five. Number six, Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-one-seven, authorizing a workman's compensation lump sum petition and order in the amount of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents to Brian Rodriguez. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
The consent agenda has been approved as is. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. We have none. And Agenda Item I, Considerations. The first consideration we have tonight is a consideration of a staff proposal to limit the number of retail tobacco stores. Ultimately, I wanted to bring this forward before you chime us in here, City Manager, but I want to bring it forward because in the past, we had had some conversation about tobacco stores. Do we want to put a limit on them? No different than how we did the video gaming establishments. We have a limit of ten of those in our community, and I thought it would be a great opportunity to bring it forward for council to discuss, to see if we want to move forward with something like that or not. So that's kind of the premise of why this is before you. City Manager, I figure you want to give us some background?
Just a few things, yes, please. And good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, the mayor suggested this at the staff level. We thought it was a good idea as well. It was back in April that the council had some extended conversation about whether there ought to be a limit on a number of retail tobacco stores. And for people in the audience and looking in tonight, we have two general categories of tobacco stores. We have the more generic kind where there it's an ancillary and a minor portion of the overall sales. It's oftentimes a display of tobacco products behind the checkout lane somewhere. That's not what we're talking about here tonight. A retail tobacco store is defined in our Unified Development Ordinance as a business deriving more than thirty percent of its gross revenue from the sale of tobacco or nicotine products and accessories, and which dedicates more than twenty-five percent of its total floor area to the storage and sale of such items. So those are the two general categories. We, until recently, had five retail tobacco stores, and that's what we have, and we had a council discussion back in April. One of those has gone out of business. Now there is another party interested in going through the process to get a license. We thought this is a good time to bring this before the council for as a consideration. And at this point, I'm going to pause and back up and let the council discuss this and then join in if necessary.
Council, open discussion. We have four. There's an interested party for a fifth. Do we want to set a limit on retail tobacco stores?
Well, I think everybody knows where I stand with these tobacco stores. Yeah, I want to set the limit. I don't want any more, you know. If anything, I would like to take more away. So I mean, that's, I don't want to bore everybody with what I have to say, but I think I've been pretty clear and I stand firm on what I've said in the past, so.
The Alderwoman Larson.
I'll just support Alderman Walker, the same thoughts. I'm just, I think four is more than enough, if not too much. So I wouldn't support anymore.
Others? Alderwoman Zizada?
I am a little flexible on this decision, but I do think that these stores don't bring any value to our community, any true value, and can result in having negative impact on our community. I do generally like to let the free market do its thing. However, I can see benefit to our community in limiting them, and if that is the direction that you all want to go, I would support that.
Alderman Smith or Verbic? Any comments? Not, just curious. Yes, Alderman Smith.
Well, I'm looking at it more than just the four. I think all said and done, we're at thirty-two, if you'd be realistic.
That's all, all kinds of stores, yes.
Everybody inclusive, yeah.
It's like the grocery store, too.
And I can't agree with the other older persons that...
Drugstores, others.
Yeah, but they're still selling similar products.
Like, if you're a smoker, if you're hard-pressed not to be able to...
Stumble on.
Stones throw, be able to get a pack of cigarettes. And I smoked for twenty-one years, so I'm a little sympathetic with that addiction, believe me. Alderverk, anything?
I support what I'm hearing around council. I don't see that we're impacting availability as we see all of the places that those products are, that those products are available. I will support council's wish.
And again, to be clear, City Manager, this is for tobacco establishments that are primarily gaining their sales through tobacco. It doesn't affect bar, or not bars, it doesn't affect grocery stores and gas stations and all that.
Yes, that's correct.
And the fifth person that's interested, how far down the path are they?
We have, we've said, look, there's...
Okay.
There's a council concern here. We're going to bring it to the council and we'll let you know. And I think they may be in the audience tonight.
Yeah.
Yes. And maybe you'd like to hear from them.
Yeah, I'm totally open for that. Sure. If you want to come up and, you've got to come up to the podium and state your case, why we should expand the amount of tobacco stores that we have. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself so we know your name, that'd be great.
Hello, good evening. My name is Bashar Sayidi. I'm the owner of a small family community. Name is Flying Puff. I want to open tobacco vape smoke shop in your community, Robert. The lowest prices there are employed from the community, pay taxes, and county and state. So please welcome me to your community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I like the others in more than happy limiting it to four tobacco stores in our community and not expanding it. Yes, Alderverk.
But there's nothing stopping if this gentleman wanted to purchase one of the other businesses. That would be okay, right?
That's, as it stands now, that would be okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So it sounds like we have consensus on this, so that would mean we bring it back as a modification to our existing ordinance?
Bring it back now. Five is the current limit. I assume because there's only four, you'd like to go down to four?
Yes, that's, that's...
Yes.
That's the impression I had from everybody.
That's...
Correct me if I'm wrong. Speak now or forever hold a peace. Yes, Alderman Smith.
Bill, as far as licensing, is there a difference between the two on the ordinance?
You mean between...
Well, we have the thirty...
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
There's still, there's still a license, but there's a, there's a big difference because one is primarily, well, let's say, a substantial portion of the store is devoted toward tobacco and tobacco products, and there's a different license amount.
So since we're going down this path, I don't know how the others feel. Should we limit to twenty-eight as well?
Well, that isn't what this consideration is. And we haven't done any polling of those. So that's everything from grocery stores to...
Gas stations.
Drugstores, gas stations. It's a mixed crowd, and for different reasons, they have those products, and it maybe gets to what Alderwoman Zizada was saying. It's kind of a free market. They do other things that we might not like.
Yeah, and I agree with free market, but it sounds like losing one is already establishing our free market baseline.
I'm sorry.
Losing a store is really establishing our free market baseline, so. Thanks.
Alderwoman Zizada?
Yeah, I think the challenge with limiting it to the twenty-eight types, if we were to limit it, it would become really challenging for certain businesses. Say, somebody wants to open a gas station or a new grocery store, and then they're in a challenging position to compete with the other stores with those products. So that's, that's what gives me pause on that. That's all.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, except for me, it really just comes down to, we have, our, part of our role at council is ultimately to help be the voice of the community and what we want DeKalb to overall be. And whether it's video gaming establishments, liquor stores, or in this case, tobacco establishments, I think it is our responsibility to decide. Is it, like we've talked about before, Alderwoman Zizada, free market decide, or do we want to decide? So this will come back, then, as an ordinance modification?
Yes, in an upcoming meeting.
Okay, all right. Appreciate it. All right, then, moving on to the second consideration, consideration of a staff update on our transit center project. Super excited about that. So...
I'm going to set it up, and you'll have, if you have detailed questions, Mike Newing Kirchner, our transit manager, is here in the audience, and I've given...
I'm sorry, City Manager. If whoever was here on the consideration regarding limiting the number of retail tobacco stores, if you want to leave at this time, it's not disrespectful in any way, shape, or form. You're more than welcome to go ahead and leave. I don't want to, I know everyone's busy, and I want you to have the rest of your night. Sorry, City Manager.
That's all right. There's a lot of background here, a lot of text and some, some pretty pictures. There are lots of other pictures, and there are some background that was not presented in the summary that you get for every meeting. But I think you've all had a chance to read through this, and most of you have served through the process that's described here. Again, for people in the audience who didn't know, we, in fact, when I hired in two thousand and nineteen, back in two thousand and eighteen, the person serving on the city council selected StanTech Architecture, which has a worldwide architectural design reputation, to begin the process of working with us, first searching for an appropriate site for a transit facility, and then also working on the designing, ultimately getting to construction and so forth. When you start off at that point, the sky's the limit. Now, the sky wasn't the limit on location, so that was something that occupied a lot of the first years of the conversation. And ultimately, a council committee, an ad hoc committee was organized, and the council, back in October of twenty-two, approved recommendation from that committee, which was chaired by Alderman Smith, to land it at the Dresser Road site, which is described in more detail in the background. And StanTech, at this point, I'll just, we can go back and touch on details, but I'm just going to move right through this. In December of this year, StanTech had a design report, which includes not only floor plans and elevations, but also some of the detailed work that goes into a project manual. That was about sixty percent complete. And what we're looking at now is a facility that has about eighteen thousand, two hundred square feet. Their first design, by the way, was about three times that size. And while it probably would have been prize-winning in terms of our revenue that we had available for doing this, it would not have been feasible. And so we have, we have tried to compress this to stay within some budget parameters, but also, to be very practical, this, this layout on the Dresser Road site is going to be more than just a building. There's going to be multiple buildings. A big main building, which will combine not only offices, but also work areas and shop areas. And then there's a separate building that is a bus wash area, and there's also a fueling facility off to the north end of this particular property, and space for parking the buses and space for parking of cars and other vehicles for the employees and visitors. So it's a fairly large site, and the, what's before you tonight is, is a design and elevation, and we hope that you've had some time to look at that. That will get us, we're on the way right now to a bid package this April, sometime in April, if all goes well, gets done. And we would go out, the documents would be, before we go out to bid, the pre-bid documents have to be submitted to IDOT, and so much of the, of the funding is going to come from the federal government through the state government, the Department of Transportation, to us. Then they get the chance, obviously, to see what we're doing. Is it cost-wise, and it will serve the intended purposes? And IDOT review may take up to six months. That's what they're allowed to have on this. So as much as I would like to see the construction, the bids go out, and hopefully the bids are attractive bids, and the council gets to make then a decision, and IDOT gets to make a decision, and we actually break ground, I don't see that happening until the spring of twenty-six. So that's where we are right now, and you see up in front of you, and people in the audience can maybe see this, very compressed aerial view of the site with a roundabout, as you can see, at Normal Road, for the safety of traffic and also pedestrians, schoolchildren that'll walk that road, as well as others who do. And to the north is, as I mentioned, going to be the fuel depot, and then you see a couple of buildings there strung along the right north-south axis, if you will, and then parking in the front. There'll be lots of landscaping. There's a retention, a large retention pond. That is a wet area, as you know, and so one of the big challenges in the site design was going to be dealing with that and repairing the tiles and other things that have caused the water to pond there instead of getting to the river, as was originally intended. And so it's not too far, just east of our water tower and our fire station, and it will be, we think, as attractive. But these, these are big buildings for big vehicles, and hopefully they will, it will all come together. We'll have more to show you as the plan's near that pre-bid completion and before we send them off to IDOT.
Council, questions, comments?
Got one.
Yes, Alderverk.
The, so the twenty million, seven eighty-one, that includes all of these street improvements as well, roundabout?
It's all there. It's all there. Now, that's what we're saying, we're wishfully hoping that's what it is. We don't know what the bids will be. There's some give here. The early projections always have error in them. Certain, certain percents are added to certain pieces for contingencies and the rest, and if all goes well, we get a good general contractor and good experience behind that general contractor. Oftentimes, you can cut a pretty good chunk out of that. So our budget is our budget. That's what it is. And I think in this, in this day, we're hoping that it remains our budget, so.
And on that note, hundred percent federally funded?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which, that's important for everyone listening, hundred percent federally funded, yes. Other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Smith.
Since I was involved from the beginning, this is a great design, Mike. I know it's not what we initially had, so as Bill knows, the dollars aren't going as far as they were. One thing that's critical to understand is the buses will be outside, but having a wash, a chassis wash, is critical to maintain the life of the vehicles. I mean, these vehicles are over, well, a million dollars, I believe, but let's just call it a million each. So will we be scaling this for, it'll probably have to be upgraded, right, for the weight of the vehicles?
There is some room for expansion and upgrading. There's certainly room on the site, but also the buildings will be designed, and so that could happen.
Yeah, and I might as well mention this. Mike, I'm sure you've taken into consideration electric plug-in power supply for the hybrids, correct? So I know you have, so I've just had to bring it forward, so.
So I should, with a meaning of disrespect for our city engineer, Zach Gill, who's also been very active in the preliminary work with Mike and teamed up with Mike, when I asked him to about, I mean, he's been involved going back about a year ago, to get this moving in the direction of a build schedule. And that's where we are now, and I'm very grateful to him for that.
Along that line, Zach, this will take care, I think you and I had long discussions about the water retention in the back and the collapse. Is there a collapsed drainage tile back there, correct?
There is. The drainage, as you see there, are partially man-made. It's not like it was a naturally intended as a wetland or anything like that. So, yeah, right now, there's a, I think, I don't know, I don't think I've used this thing before. I'll get it a whirl. So right now, there's a tile about here that kind of meanders its way up, goes right underneath what is a wetland conservation area, and actually proceeds over behind the high school. And in that private property is where we think it's ruptured and also probably just generally undersized. It takes that whole portion of that farm field where Iron Gate was proposed. So what we're doing, and we've worked, the, the current landowner is very amenable to working with us, that we would get an easement, and we would run a separate dedicated line, and just be, right now, it's like a, I don't know, what is it? Like an eight inch or something like, it's pretty small out there. So we would put in like a twelve-inch RCP and all that. And because we're detaining it on-site, we can meet those release rates, meet our own ordinance and do all that stormwater stuff. But we'd certainly be able to capture and even assist the land of the south, right, because they get backed up when that gets backed up. So we'll be able to take in some of that pass-through water, store it, and then discharge it responsibly into, into a more secure and steady outfall.
Thanks, Zach.
And Alder Smith, you were talking about the wash. Not only will it make the vehicles look great, but just the undercarriage and the salt is what you're referring to? Yeah, okay. Any other comments or questions on this? All right, awesome.
Go for it.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
When will we see this again, you think? Who knows? Well, not who knows, but a while.
Well, we could, let's see how it goes. If we're on target, then at the end of April, we've got something to send upstairs to IDOT. We'll give you a quick view of where everything is.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero-one-eight, authorizing the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-four F-five-fifty forty-foot, forty-five-foot aerial truck from Global Rental Company in amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars out of fund four-twenty. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Zizada, City Manager.
Thank you. This is one of Andy Rice's creative financing packages.
We love those.
Yeah. And, and I think it works, and you see in the background what I've described as the, the word is overused, but a catastrophic failure in the hydraulics of our aerial lift right now. And they don't make, Liftall was acquired, and then much of their line was disbanded as other, other things became the target of investment by the buyer. And replacement parts are getting scarcer and scarcer, because that was in two thousand and eight. You can imagine, you really have to scrounge now to get things. And to throw everything together that we would need would cost anywhere up from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, we hope, if we can find these parts. So we've been looking around. An aerial truck is something we can, can use every day and practically do use almost every day. And this is the larger one that we use when we're fixing traffic signals and streetlights and putting decorations up and whatever it happens to be. So they're not cheap, as you might guess. There is a company that was willing to rent us a brand-new unit at twenty-nine-hundred a month. That's pretty healthy rent. Through negotiation that Andy Rice conducted, the company agreed to credit one-half of a year's rental cost against the purchase price if we were to proceed and buy that. And when you look at what it would cost us to try to scrounge parts and what that other part of the rental would be, it's about a wash, and so this year would be, also be, you know, we don't, we don't have to buy that at the end of the year, so we'll have a heck of a shakeout period here to see if it fits our needs. They, any, any shortfall or difference will be made up by the division just reducing spending in its equipment line items. This is a premier piece of equipment, and so it takes precedence over some other things that we, we can do without this year. So I thank the division for helping and for Andy pulling it together.
Council, questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two-five dash zero-one-eight passes. Will you be offering rides to council members? And of course, the public?
Lot ups and downs.
I would never go up forty-five feet and something like that. All right. Number two, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero-one-nine, authorizing professional service agreements with Badger Hydrovac for Daylighting and Engineering Enterprises, E.E.I., for design engineering as it pertains to daylighting water service lines to repair and inventory for the lead line replacement program in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Zizada, City Manager.
Thank you. So the payoff for this comes a little bit later in, in the agenda when we're talking about that three-point-one-million-dollar loan, forgivable loan that we're looking to engage the IEPA on. And preliminary to that, we have to positively identify every line, every service line in this, in this city. And we've gone about this for years now, and we're down to some one hundred and seventy-one question marks. And some of those, we estimate, are lead, and some of them are galvanized, which replace lead. But the galvanized has to be replaced now, too. Complicating these things in our, by our ordinances for generations, the city, because mains were often in the middle of the street, city took the service line, if that were to rupture under the street, we'd engage whatever needed to be done at our expense to get a new service line to the Buffalo Box, which is that, you see a little disc that's popping out of your grass? That's, that's where the shut-off is for the service line that continues on into the house. And at that point, usually behind the sidewalk, sometimes right in the middle of your driveway, but hopefully not, it, it goes to the house. It, it goes to the house, and that's the private part of the service line. But in the EPA's eyes, we're accountable and responsible for replacing that, too, if we find that there is lead or galvanized leading up to that point. We have to know for sure, so, and we have to do this soon in order to qualify by early summer for the EPA loan. And so we have to quote daylight. In other words, we have to dig down. And in the old days, you'd be out there with shovel and pick and so forth, but we have some equipment that can, as long as we can identify where the lines are, and we have the, the sounding equipment to do that, we can go down and kind of suck it, suck the soil and, as you get further down, maybe some gravel out and, and confirm that that is either lead or galvanized. Or it could be copper, but we have a good reason to believe that there's 171 that aren't. So once we identify those, then we know what we have, and then we complete the, the application and get it to the EPA at the appropriate time. And no later than that, because then we'll miss the vote, and, and after that, we don't know where we'll be. At this point, I can say, and I'm happy to say this, we dedicated a substantial amount of our ARPA money toward replacement of lead lines, thanks to the council's judgment on that. And so we're, we're ahead of most cities in Illinois. And if, it'd probably take a couple of years with, if, hopefully we get that, that EPA money to finish, but just a couple. And, and we'll still be way ahead of most cities, smaller or larger than us. And so it's important that we, that this hydrovac is, is costing us in a contract about 45,000. There'll be some superintendents of that by Engineering Enterprises, about 5,000. So we're asking for you to approve the contract now for that daylighting of the lines.
Counsel, questions or comments? That is something we should be really proud of, that being on the Illinois Municipal League and talking to mayors from around the state of Illinois, a lot of people are a lot further behind on their lead pipe replacement than we are. So definitely got to commend the Water Department and city administration as well for just really staying on top of that. It's nice to know that if we had the funds in a couple of years, we can eliminate the last of the lead pipelines. All right, hearing none, no other comments or questions. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2025-019 passes. Now we're moving on to two agenda items that are TIF-related, and they're in the downtown. So as usual, I will recuse myself from the vote, and I'll also accuse myself from any participation in the conversation. But I will just stick around, just to kind of run things to get us through it. So with that, I would, we're moving on to number three, which is resolution 2025-020, authorizing a development agreement with 206 East Lincoln LLC for the redevelopment of 206 East Lincoln Highway, pin number 08-23-163-001. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution and the next one describe what is in my mind two important and exciting downtown redevelopment projects. Both, there are some similarities. Both agreements reference life safety improvements. The, the proposed TIF forgivable loans are specifically dedicated to our life safety improvements and more specifically sprinkling requirements. And along with the sprinkling of certain spaces in this building and in the next one we're going to talk about, we're also talking about automatic alarm systems that go with them and the rest. So it's, it's, in, in both cases, expensive proposition. One of the reasons why there is a TIF III is because the council thought there was still a need to help stimulate private redevelopment in the downtown area. And so with that general guidance, I, I've been meeting and other members of our staff, I've been meeting with the, the owner and also the, the interested party that is looking to establish a restaurant in the former Eduardo's. And that's the space that we're talking about for the moment. And in my background, I, I realized at the outset, I, in, in doing my own research, I wanted to see exactly where we were in terms of the original forgivable loan that was extended to the Baye family for their building at 206 East Lincoln Highway back in, in February, almost exactly five years ago, February 24th, 2020, was the, the council meeting when that, that forgivable loan was extended. And at that time, it was to rehab the second floor of the building. And it was thought, now remember, this is just before COVID. We didn't know in February. March, all of a sudden, we knew there was going, it was a new era, a new world. But we, we thought there was interest at that time in, in the reopening of the very handsome restaurant and, and bar space on the first floor. So at the time that we were calculating how long it would take, it was a 10-year forgivable loan, by the way. And we figured it would take about 10 years for the combination of the increased property tax and sales tax to offset the, the value of that loan, which was 216,800. So I went back and I looked in some detail about where we were with our, our tax rate at the time, where we were with the multiplier. And there's a chart here that shows that per year, the actual property taxes have hit that 20, 20,500 to 21,500 roughly level. And to this point, in terms of counting new EAV, this is not the total EAV and, and value of the, of the building as it is now. But we had seen about 125, maybe almost 126,000 worth of new property taxes. It could be assigned to that original loan, which is about halfway, right? So it's a five, it's a 10-year loan, and we're five years along the way, which happens to be the threshold when you could get another bite of the apple. And a bite of the apple is what's asked for. To your credit and to the credit, frankly, the Baye family, and also, I don't know if it's credit, but owing to the, what happened in 2020, from March through almost the end of 2021, when COVID, there were constraints on what kinds of businesses could be open or not. This is a hospitality business. They were hit the worst. And we did a number of things to try to keep things afloat. But there, needless to say, nothing ever was established there in the way of, on the first floor of a commercial restaurant again or tavern, and still that remains the case. But now there is interest in that. And so rather than propose to you that we double count the, the property taxes, I've taken that out of the equation. And I spun numbers to see, will there be enough sales tax based on certain variables to pay off the, the, the annual on the forgivable loan? My conclusion is more than enough. And the analysis is in your background. The variables are these, and I've talked to the Bayes, but I've also gone back over some of the other projects we've done and talked to other people about what might be an average bill for, in this case, a restaurant which has a, a open pizza oven, that wood-fired pizza oven, which is one of the reasons why there has to be sprinkler in that building. Although they could, they could settle maybe for a smaller occupancy allowance. With the wood-burning open fire, there's no way they couldn't have to have the, that's bad language. There's no way that they could avoid having a suppression system there. So the, the gentleman who is looking to establish the, the Italian restaurant has one very much like this in operation in Ottawa and has for some time. And you can go on, and I imagine some of you have on the, on the website to see what, what that's like. And I just took another peek into there just today, and I noticed that, that, if any of you remember the old Eduardo's, the very handsome bar there, that, and it's still there. It's, they're cleaning up. They're also making some dust in there while trying to rearrange some things. But they're not, they're not going to be able to do what they need to do without putting that fire suppression system in. So the loan to get that done, that's proposed to you tonight, is $98,000. That would be amortized very comfortably by sales tax revenues over a term of 10 years. I want to say one other thing, and I'll, I'll stop. In the, in the interest of transparency, when we did TIF III, and also just recently when we did TIF IV, we proposed, and the other taxing bodies who are part of our joint review board agreed, that whenever we are going to do a major project, other than the AIP projects, which are the $25,000 limit, the smaller facade improvements and that roof repair and that kind of thing, we would bring the project to them. They don't get a collective veto, but, so they could do an informal review. And they also don't have to go back to their boards, although they could if they wanted to. The representatives there are presumably authorized to review these, because we talk about them every, every three months, anyway. We did not have a quorum at the last meeting in January, so we weren't able to talk about it. So I sent a very much the same background as you see here tonight, and also for the next project we're going to talk about, to them. And so far, there's only three voting taxing bodies left, but strong support, school district is one, park district, township, Kishawaki College, DeKalb Library, and that's it so far. Oh, and it's not a voting member, but Kishawaki Water Reclamation District sits on our JR-B. So does the Forest Preserve, the DeKalb County Forest Preserve. And we, we've made a seat for every taxing body, even if by state statute, they don't have a vote on these matters. So what's before you tonight is for your conversation. And now, and when we come back, we'll have heard from all the other taxing bodies, and I'll be able to report on where we are with that. I, I trust the others will probably be in line with what I've just reported. And we at the staff level strongly recommend this. I, this is the, the but for, the completion of this remodeling that is sort of starting and fits and starts. They're not going too hard until they see where they stand.
Counsel, questions or comments? Yes, Alderwoman Larson.
I support this for, for a couple of reasons. It's always good for any city or town to have all their storefronts full. And this has been empty for quite a while. And, and secondly, I think there's a real need for it. I know my husband and I, we went out to dinner a couple of weeks ago. We're like, geez, what's going on? Well, it was jazz night at the Egyptian, and every place was packed. I mean, it was just, you couldn't get in for two hours. So can DeKalb support another restaurant? I think they can. And, and so for both of those reasons, I'm supportive of this.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Powell.
So what happens if it doesn't materialize as far as the last TIF and the new one?
Well, the last TIF is not going to rely on the new sales tax to amortize what's left of its loan, okay? This will rely on a sales tax. So there is, in, in all of our agreements that we've been doing now since about 2011, when we started doing some, some harder looks at these, these promissory notes, or forgivable notes. And that is that we have a claim, we have a lien on the property. So if it doesn't, doesn't work, then they have 90 days to pay us. They can go to the bank and loan, they can sell the property, they can do what they want, but it's ironclad. It's just like, like a mortgage on your house.
Yeah.
If you don't pay it, and the bank comes along, the bank has precedence.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Walker.
I mean, well, Bob Rydell and I love pizza, so I mean, I'm for it, for sure. What about you, Mike?
Other comments or questions? Yes, Alderwoman Zazada.
I, I think the numbers add up. It's a really compelling case, just numbers-wise. However, I think obviously we need it downtown. We don't want open storefronts. And I think storefronts with good businesses in them help the other businesses and helps all around. So I believe the numbers are going to be better than this in the end.
Thank you. I agree.
Others? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Oh, so I would like to take, if it's okay with you, we take the vote after the JR-B has finished the review, which is going to be on the 24th. But I, I'm getting the consensus, it's fair to say that you support this, and, and that will also keep the wheels going so that people can plan.
You got it.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so moving on to number three. I would take a motion to continue this to a later council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
That was moved, I think, by Alderwoman Larson and seconded by Alderman Powell. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2025-020 has been postponed then. Moving on to number four, resolution 2025-021, authorizing the development agreement with Long Family Management LLC for the redevelopment of 323 East Lincoln Highway and 333 East Lincoln Highway, pin number 08-23-160-021 and pin 08-23-160-022. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor for discussion? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman Smith, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The principles of Long Family Management are in the audience tonight and may want to address this after we briefly set this up. The, the resolution, as with the, the previous resolution, is up for your review tonight. Again, the, the JR-B is nearly complete with its review, and majority have, have had no reservations about it. But let's see where we stand, and we'll bring this back on the 24th. But to the particulars, the, the two properties that we're looking at that would be affected by this are 323 and 333 East Lincoln Highway, the area that is formerly known as McCabe's. 323 is a three-story structure, and 333 is a two-story structure. But on the first floor, there is a conjoined or interconnected large entertainment area. And I, I won't put any members of the council on the spot, but it used to be quite the place. I remember buckets of beer coming out of there. At that time, our city codes did not require sprinkling in, in large spaces like that, where hundreds and hundreds of people could gather and have a good time. That's no longer the case. The, the codes have changed, the times have changed. That's a very significant cost in this instance. And we've had conversation in recent months about what might be done. And occurred to me that we were in a position in our TIF fund to not only help to support what we just talked about at 206 East Lincoln Highway, but also help to support this. The McCabe's Building and, and Eduardo's, as has been said, really key vacancies in our downtown area. And they are seen by people every day, driving through and people wondering, oh, that's a neat building. What, what's going on inside? And, you know, see, there's obviously nothing. So what could we do? Again, if, if there had been initiative to do this on the private side, it probably would have been done by now if money was no object. But money is an object when it comes to this kind of life safety installation. And so with the, the kind cooperation and collaboration of the Long Family, we have come to some numbers. What's before you in this case is larger, much larger space. And the, the TIF forgivable loan that's proposed is $200,000. So the combined, McCabe's and the former Eduardo's proposals is 208, or excuse me, $298,000. We happen to have 290,000 set aside in that line item. But I couldn't grind either of them, so I, they're tough. They're tough negotiators. So we, no, I'm kidding. We No, I'm kidding. We're close enough that with all the line items in the TIF budget, we will still be within our budget by the end of year. And this is a major initiative, larger than any initiative since the old City Hall was before you for redevelopment proposal, and we're tickled to bring it to you, frankly. The details are in your background. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we strongly recommend that you support this, as you have with the other project.
Counsel, questions or comments? Alderman Walker.
Yeah, I'm definitely supporting this. I kind of know the Long family. They're pretty good people, and I know David Long, you know, he was one of my old athletes, and the one thing about the young man is, when he puts his mind to something, he definitely tries a way to figure it out. And another thing, I think, well, back in my day, you know, I don't want to age me, too. My daughter's watching tonight, but her dad used to be able to, you know, dance on the dance floor a little bit. So can I ask you a couple of questions, sir? David?
I wasn't prepared.
Yeah, I know you wasn't.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
So I got a question. So, now, all seriousness, so are we going to try to get that back up into a nightclub at some point?
So I will say this. We have a tenant. They've signed a multi-year lease, and as soon as sprinklers are installed, they are expecting to open that space up.
Okay, that's... All right, now do I get a free cover now?
Maybe.
I'm proud of you.
Other comments or questions? Alderman Smith.
I think Alderman, the other Alderman just answered the question. Without the fire sprinkler, no one can occupy the space.
Correct.
So we're... We need to move forward with this.
We do.
Yeah, and I do know David a long time, so good project, sir, so I'm for this.
Alderman Zazada.
I'll echo the sentiments of the other Aldermen. You know, it's great to see local families investing in our local community, and it's really exciting. This is a fantastic project and could be transformative for our downtown. It's like, this building is the size of a block, almost. This is a huge project and very exciting, and I'm thrilled to support it.
Any others? All right, I would take a motion to postpone this resolution to a later date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Six I.
Awesome. And like I said, you don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting. I know you all are busy, so you can take off, no problem whatsoever. All right, moving on to Agenda Item K, ordinances. Second reading, we have none, so Agenda Item L... I guess I'm probably supposed to verbalize. Hang on. I will say, for the record, Resolution 2025-021 has been postponed. All right. Agenda Item L, ordinances, first reading, number one, ordinance 2025-005, amending Chapter 51 Traffic Schedule B through streets, comma, stop intersections and yield intersections, to establish stop conditions for Magnolia Street and Walnut Street. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a picture of the streets in question, and what's interesting is that what's requested here, that there would be stops where Magnolia and Walnut come up against Knolls Avenue and one of its offshoots, if you will. Knolls is the connecting Collector Street that joins a lot of these smaller residential streets. And in the past, you have had some people say, can we get a yield sign? Can we get a stop sign? And on occasion, that has been possible. In this case, in terms of the accident history, we don't have the warrants, as we discussed here in the past. And in fact, one of those issues that often comes up is speed control, and that's not generally a warrant for a stop sign, interestingly. And Zach Gil is here to answer any specific question you have about that. But our... The Illinois Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices sets out what the warrants are, and why is that so important? Is it just to satisfy some interested engineers? No. So if you're going to prosecute the person who might be at fault in an accident, if it was carelessness or something like that, and you have a signage, a directional signage or a specific sign, it's like a stop sign, which has a meaning in law, and it doesn't comply with that, then they can throw the case out. It really depends on adjudication. So we like to have signs align with what we think we can enforce over time. Nevertheless, there are places in town where drivers defy the logic of all this, and speed can be an issue, disregard for the rules of the road. We probably all of us see this, and people in the audience see it, too. I mean, how often do people yield to people coming from the right anymore? It just doesn't happen. And that's one of the issues here. So if you don't yield, what do you do here? You just kind of let it rip? Now, I would say, by far, the greater number of intersections in this town have no signs. Wherever you are, you can go through. Tilton Park you can go through. River Mist, you can be on South Fifth or Sixth, or North Thirteenth or Fourteenth. Lots of streets come to that Collector Street, and there's no stop sign there, unless something like this came before the council and people said, you know, we've tried everything. By the way, we do targeted patrol, but we can't park a squad car at every corner, obviously, or in particular, this corner. So what do we do? And I think you would say that reluctantly, but with some purpose. What's before you tonight is a recommendation to proceed to approve this ordinance as it's written.
Counsel, questions or comments on this? Alderman Larson.
I just feel that, you know, sometimes we'll be like, well, it doesn't qualify until somebody's dead, and then you have several families whose lives will have been changed forever. And I can see, when you look at this picture, that it looks like it's wide open when you're on Magnolia and Walnut and coming in, but there's two houses on the corner, so that traffic coming southbound then, it's like, they're going to come blindly. And so I'm hoping that we do get stop signs there. I just don't think it's... I don't think it's safe and for a family situation.
Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, many thanks to Zach Gil for your work in attending our ward meeting and hearing out our residents, our property owners, about this particular intersection. And yes, the streets are wide, which is nice, but on the other hand, they really open up the road for people to drive faster. And that's what we have as we approach this intersection, is just too many people moving at a too-high rate of speed, not only on Magnolia, but also coming off of what is South Malta Road there at the Knolls. They're accustomed to going that higher rate of speed on South Malta Road, and they just come in to this subdivision too quickly. So again, thanks, Zach, and thanks to everyone that participated in this, and yes, I support this.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, this is going down in history. Older person, Larson and I are agreeing on everything today. But no, you're absolutely right, because I'm a UPS driver, we all know, and I've seen some close calls, and I get to sit up high in the UPS truck. And like Alderman Verbic said, they're coming off of South Malta as, you know, as a fast, alarming rate, and there's been times where, if I wasn't paying attention, I would have hit somebody as well. So I think this is great. I'm glad we're finally getting those in, and I definitely support this.
Any other comments or questions?
For me, I look forward to when we're up to 75 sworn officers, to really start working on traffic. The number one, one of the number-one issues, the top two for sure, that people complain about in the city of DeKalb is speeders. And there's no amount of stop signs that's going to prevent that. And if we put a stop sign in for everyone that wanted one, it'd take an hour to get from one side of town to another. So we're really challenged by what is going to be effective. And I think, once we can have more officers out there continuously running traffic, pulling over speeders, I think part of it's going to be the reputation in our community that if you speed, if you violate the traffic signs and traffic signals, chances are, someone's going to see you and you're going to get a ticket. And I'm hoping that's probably going to be the number-one preventative measure that we're going to have going forward, but that's going to take some time. Since there was no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordnance 2025-005 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
A motion to waive second reading was made by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Zazada. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2025-005. Moving on to number two, ordinance 2025-006, amending Chapter 51 Traffic Schedule S School Speed Limit, 20 miles per hour on school days when children are present, to establish a school zone along McCormick Drive as it approaches Jefferson Elementary. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Walker. City Manager.
No controversy here. No technical points to make. This is a stretch that is in the vicinity of Jefferson Elementary School. For a long time, it just hasn't had the kind of signage that would heighten driver awareness of children that are there. And sometimes you don't see them. Sometimes you say, oh, school's in. I don't see a lot of kids, and all of a sudden, someone's darting and running. It's otherwise a pretty quiet residential area, so we recommend this traffic ordinance revision to you.
And that's where all the parents and buses come in, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, questions or comments, Counsel? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordnance 2025-006 is passed on first reading. Take a motion to waive second.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman, or moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman Zazada. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordnance 2025-006, second reading has been waived. Moving on to number three, ordinance 2025-007, revoking a special-use permit for a vehicle tow facility and storage yard at 407 Industrial Drive, JNS Towing and Recovery. Can I have a motion to bring this one to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Back about two and a half years ago, the council approved an ordinance that ran a special-use to JNS Towing and Recovery to allow for an expansion of their storage lot for towed vehicles, and that overflow, at the time, was justified by the business that they were doing. That business is no longer supporting that kind of a need, and so they have come to us and asked if we could revoke that special use. They want to use it for other purposes, and that's why it's on your agenda tonight. We support that revocation, since it's no longer desired by the property owner. We don't have reason to believe that there's going to be a whiplash of change here. There's things that are a little bit different in that business.
Questions or comments, Counsel? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordnance 2025-007 is passed on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2025-007. Moving on to number four, ordinance 2025-008, authorizing the borrowing of funds from the Public Water Supply Loan Program through the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, IEPA, in an amount not to exceed $3,100,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. City Manager.
Thank you. We talked a little bit about this earlier in the meeting tonight. One of the key pieces of documentation for the principal loan forgiveness program of the IEPA is this agreement, which says the council, not just some people working on the staff, are solidly behind us. It's essential for us to complete our packet and to get our proposal to the IEPA by June 30th, 2025, and that's coming sooner than we thought. We wanted to get a head start on this. There's some other minor things that need to be pulled together. We ask for your support.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordnance 2025-008 is passed on first reading. I take a motion to waive second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2025-008. All right, moving on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications, Councilmember reports. Alderman Verbic, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Okay. Alderman Larson.
Just kind of listening to the weather report lets all of us remember how to drive in snow. It's been quite a while, and it sounds like we might get quite a bit, and poor Andy and his crew are going to be up quite a lot, so thank you ahead of time.
Alderman Zazada.
I am holding a ward meeting. Sorry, I feel like my mic's not working right tonight. Yeah. I'm holding a ward meeting, the 27th, Thursday, the 27th of February, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, so that's coming up. And just want to note that there is a DeKalb March for Immigrants this February 16th at 1:30 p.m. That's a Sunday, at the NIU parking garage.
Alderman Smith?
No report.
Alderman Powell?
I just want to apologize for my tiredness. I had a last-minute emergency, but other than that...
No worries. Alderman Walker?
Yes, got a few things. So first of all, I want to kind of piggyback off what Mayor Barnes said about some of the speeding around town. So first of all, I got to give some good recognition to our City Manager and an officer by the name of Chuck Verdoni. So I was, you know, like I said, UPS guy, working, and people... And I wish we can get this out, but we're going to get to the point where we're getting sick and tired of people going around buses when the arm is out. So, and I'm going to tell a quick story, I'm sorry, but I have to. I played football with a guy who was an idiot who got around the arm and killed a kid. And that sticks with me to this day, and, you know, we... So I'm always looking for that, you know. I'm always looking for bad drivers when I'm working. I'm constantly. And I just have to thank, you know, Bill Nicholas and Chief Byrd for, you know, officers, because Chuck hops right on it, and he has the best attitude, because I'm furious, but he has a good attitude about how he deals with it. And I know some of us up here, we kind of hard on our police sometimes, but Chuck's one of the best. And, you know, that day, he pulled over about seven or eight people, and he was very firm on why you shouldn't go around buses. And we have to slow down for these kids, because I love my kids, and I want to make sure, you know, they come home to me every day. That's the first one. So thank you, City Manager, for hopping on that for me. Number two, I want to know, are there any updates for renters insurance for the tenants?
No, well, okay.
Yep. So Assistant City Manager Bob Verdel may want to chime in on this, but we, there have been some meetings recently, and we're going to approach this in two ways. One is that the local renters group, DARA, DeKalb Area Rental Association, is going to have an upcoming meeting. It may still be this month or maybe early March, and they're going to talk about this with members. But Bob sent out a mailing to all the people who are part of the crime-free program, 650, is that right, Bob?
Yes, we sent out 650 surveys.
Out of that, we've only received 31 back. Out of those 31 back, 11 required insurance, which accounted for 600 units, or 600 rentals out of DeKalb. The ones that did not require insurance accounted for 1,350 units. So out of that, it's about a third that are requiring it, but it almost was half the amount of rental units are requiring insurance at this time.
And hopefully, when DARA sends out, well, hopefully, since that was the lousy response we got, DARA could initiate maybe a survey and really encourage their membership to complete it, so we get a little more data. But that's greatly appreciated.
And the reason we're talking about this now, and we never could have had a really constructive conversation about this, say, even three years ago, but there is a type of insurance now. It's called lemonade. Actually, that's not like a colloquialism, that's what it's called. So you can pick the level of insurance that you can afford. It can be $5 a month, and all of us are thinking, wow, that's not something I'm familiar with. And so if you require it, you really have to have some offset in what the cost might be, or else no one will want to willingly do it. And people will think we're picking on tenants, you know, to suit some other purpose. So we noticed as we were working with the tenants who were dispossessed of their apartments during the fire on Hillcrest, December 22nd, that many of them had this lemonade insurance. Some had invested $15 a month, and so it was a little bit more, covered more possessions or covered maybe room stays or someplace or motel or hotel stay. So with that in mind, and this is a conversation, right? And eventually, we'll get to a point, if this is something we want to put into the model lease that we encourage landlords to use, encourage, we would hopefully also be able to pass along information and have them pass along information to say, this isn't, this is actually something that could benefit you and is probably affordable. Obviously, a lot of people have to decide on that. But it's the beginning of a discussion, and hopefully, as the discussion is fully mounted here in the months ahead.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I look forward to having the discussions with DARA more, once they can talk to their membership, get a better feel for where everyone stands. And it's going to be an educational piece, getting in front of them all, educating them on why this is important. Because if we can get DARA's buy-in, that can really drive this initiative through many of the landlords in our community.
Yeah, and I think, you know, maybe having some people that, you know, were put in that situation who have the insurance to speak as well, because I know a couple, that, you know, they lost everything, but they have that lemonade insurance. And that's why I'm bringing it up.
Like that December 22nd fire, I mean, everyone there, I think, yeah, but every one of them had lemonade.
Hey, and another thing, you two did a great job with those people, man.
Back at you, man.
You guys stepped up.
Yep, yep. Yeah, we were all there that night.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Alderman Walker? Was that it?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yep. Just have three things, pretty quick. One, was at the Chamber of Commerce's annual dinner. I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce for years and gone to annual dinners for decades, but this was probably the best annual dinner I had ever been to. There was over 350 people there, which was incredible, but the spirit of camaraderie was phenomenal. And during that event, they award multiple awards to people. But a local gentleman, Brad Hoy, got Ambassador of the Year and also was inducted into the Hall of Fame, which was really cool. And he's just a great local guy. But also Habitat for Humanity was honored with Nonprofit of the Year, which they do some amazing work. And if you could have heard the emotions coming out of the executive director, it meant the world to her. And I know it meant the world to her team. And it's really cool that the chamber takes a moment to single out nonprofits as part of this as well. And then John McOrchard won Business of the Year, which anyone that's been out to John McOrchard, especially from 20 years ago to now, it's amazing what they have created out there.